Okay.
Hi, everybody. Van Miller, I'm here.
Oh, perfect.
That's what you see on Mueller. I'm just gonna have my text of the day.
All right, Suzanne, I'm ready to go. Ready to go?
Yep, go ahead, Tom.
All right. Good morning, NAFSA, or good afternoon, wherever you may be, and not only welcome to NAFSA, but many of our affiliates, if you will, whether it be MDRT, WIFS, or many other people that have been joining us over the past week. Welcome to the NAFSA Town Hall meetings. These Town Hall meetings, we started last week. For those of you who don't know, some of this, this may be your first call. Some of these, this may be your sixth call. We started on last Monday. We've really received some great, great reviews and thank yous, if you will, some great feedback. So, thank you very much. As you probably know, as the president-elect in NAFSA, I work with the Executive Committee of NAFSA, and we've been meeting almost on a daily basis in regards to this, led by our President Kami Scott, to try and provide value to our NAFSA members in these most turbulent times that I think you could call fairly safe unprecedented. And with that being said, I, on behalf of all of everybody at NAFSA, we wish to you and your families and your colleagues, we hope everyone's safe. I think about a week ago, many of us didn't know many people that had been infected, and now, obviously, the chances of that are higher now as this, as this disease grows. But please know that you're all in our thoughts and prayers. Let's get right, right to the program if we can. This is your executive team here that I was just alluding to, and please feel free to reach out to any of us in regards to the program or how NAFSA can help you, whether it's this program or in some other capacity. You'll see there Kami Scott, our President, Larry Holzberg, our Secretary, Brock Jolly, the proverbial great bean counter, Jill Judd, who has spoken a couple of times on these webinars, our immediate past president, and of course, the CEO of CEOs, Mr. Kevin Mayhew. And with that, I'm gonna get, we're gonna get away from Tom's thoughts. I'll probably wrap them up after Van's done, but I don't want to cut into Mr. Mueller's presentation. There's a lot going on in the world in the last week, including a passage of a bill. And so, without further ado, I'd like to introduce the CEO, Mr. Kevin Mayhew. Kevin?
Good morning, or good afternoon, everybody. Again, thank you for joining us for our NAFSA Town Hall. Again, in times like these particularly, the strength of a professional association really shows, and it gives us an opportunity to get together as peers and colleagues, share information, update each other, et cetera. And so, just build it on what we said last week. I just want to emphasize to you that, you know, NAFSA is working 24/7 on your behalf, every day, working with both members of Congress, as well as with the administration. We continue to monitor and stay highly involved with the discussions going on related to COVID-19, and we want to make sure we keep you up to speed. A few key things, as you know, Congress passed, and the President signed on Friday, a little bill, $2.2 trillion worth of relief called the CARES Act. If you have not seen the analysis of that, please check your email. Over the course of last night and this morning, our government relations team put together an update that went out to you all that includes what's included in the Relief Act, who's eligible, et cetera, so you can understand how that might apply to you and your business, as well as that of your clients. So, if you haven't seen that yet, double-check your inbox. If for some reason it's not there, check your junk mail or spam filter, because sometimes last emails from NAFSA get caught up in that. But make sure you've got that. If for some reason you're not getting emails from us, I also know that you may have just chosen at some point to inadvertently say, hey, I don't want to get emails from you. And if that's the case, you shoot us a note and have us change that status. We'll make sure you're fully informed. But again, the CARES Act is now law, and there's a detailed breakdown on it, including funds that are available for small businesses to keep their employees whole, direct relief that goes to American taxpayers making $75,000 or less, or 150 or less as a couple, going up to 100,000 for individuals, actually 99,000 for individuals, or $198,000 as a couple. There's a phase-out period. Information, all that's all available in the GOV update that we, we just sent out to all of our members. Again, we're continuing to stay on top of things, working with our legislators. Do want to remind you that over the course of the next couple of months, at least through the end of April, all of our NAFSA activities are going to be virtual. So, your chapter readings are going to be held that way. Of course, updates from us are held this way, because we want to make sure that everyone is safe. But we also want to make sure that we're getting that information in a timely manner, so that you can make good use of it. So, stay tuned. We're going to continue to do these Town Halls. The schedule for that for the upcoming future is twice a week. And so, there's going to be some NAFSA programming, but we don't want to overwhelm you with too much of it at the same time. More to come on that. So, the Congressional Conference, you all probably saw in an email that went out late Thursday night, has been canceled, at least as a face-to-face event. The hotel itself, the Renaissance, decided to close its doors until at least June 2nd. But with that, again, like NAFSA always does, we're making lemonade out of lemons, and we will be doing a virtual version of it called NAFSA Nation Impact Week. So, May, on Tuesday, May 19th, we're going to do our virtual, virtual version of our diversity supossession. On Wednesday, May 20th, we're going to do an advocacy and action update that includes updates from members of Congress, our government relations team, our consultants and others. It'll be highly impactful, so please try to attend that. And again, on Thursday, May 21st, our chapter leaders will be getting together and spending time with our new VP of Member of Chapter Services, Corey Matthews, and our larger MAX team, again, talking about plans of how we can best serve our members and ensure that they're getting a quality member experience all across the country. So, lots of stuff going on there. Did also want to let you know that, of course, in times like this, we want to make sure that you all are continuing to get compensated from your companies. We sent a communication piece out to the CEOs of all the major companies last week, urging them to ensure that that revenue continues to flow to you all as producers. And there's a copy of that also available on our website, if you'd like to see, again, how we're advocating on your behalf every day, not just with policymakers, but within our own company leaders, so that you all can continue to do the good work you do. And let's hope Americans put together the right financial plan, so that their finances are prepared for life. Tom, that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you for all you do for us. We greatly appreciate it. And as Kevin said, we're going to continue to be at the forefront. We may be in a virtual world, but we're communicating with all our legislators virtually as well as we move forward. As most of you probably heard, they're already talking about stimulus plans down the road, and we'll be involved in all of that. Next up is Suzanne Caron, our Vice President of Marketing Communications, to give us a little update on COVID-19 and resources that NAFSA is making available to you. Suzanne?
Thank you, Tom. And just real quick, just to remind everybody that we are on a daily basis updating our FinancialSecurity.org site, which is our new consumer-focused site, as you're listing under here under Find an Advisor. Each day, we're releasing a new kit. We released Small Business. Today, we'll come out with Retirement, and we've already had scams. We had a release go out on Friday that went out on the True Wire, in the True Media, to pick up on all of our work that we've been doing with scams, and that we have been doing a forward-facing to our legislators, who've been extremely, they've been extremely grateful for the work that we've been putting in on behalf of the mainstream Americans. And then also, if you missed it, we do have a piece out here as well that you can give to your actual clients or to prospects, talking about the fact that they've chosen wisely and using you as their financial advisor. So, a good prospect and client-facing piece, again, emphasizing that, again, in times like this, having an advisor, an agent that is ascribing to a code of ethics is something that makes NAFSA truly unique. And so, that's there on the site as well for your use. With that, Tom, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, madam. Appreciate all your efforts in these, in these turbulent times. And now, it's on to our featured speaker. Probably one of the oldest cliches in the business is, this man needs no introduction. Well, in this case, he probably doesn't need any introduction, but I'm going to introduce him anyways. Van Mueller, he has his LUTCF, and he also has NAFSA's LACP designation. This marks his 47th year in the business, starting right out of grade school. He was quarter of the table all the way back in 1990, and he's been a member of the top of the table for the last 30 years. He's a past NAFSA trustee. He's won the Distinguished Service Awards from both NAFSA, NAFSA Wisconsin, and NAFSA Milwaukee. And if you don't know, that's where he resides from, the beautiful state of Wisconsin. He's won National Sales Achievement Awards, National Quality Awards, Health Insurance Quality Awards, and the list goes on. And then, he was a Senior Market Advisor Magazine, 2010 Senior Advisor of the Year. But on top of all that, and what he does, he's just giving back to the industry like just about no one I know. He has spoken main platform, MDRT, more times than you can put on one, one hand. He's been a main platform speaker at NAFSA more times than you can put on one hand. He's spoken the MDRT Experience in Tokyo. In other words, as you can see, he has a wealth of information, and he's not, he doesn't keep it to himself. In addition, he has a web-based monthly subscription, if you're interested. I'll promote it for him, which has been an invaluable resource to many. We're just very lucky to have Van Mueller with us today. He's been telling us about these times for quite a while, and I guess the label of his talk could be a number of things, but one of them might be, "I told you so." Without further ado, my good friend, Mr. Van Mueller.
Wow, you guys, thank you so much. I'm actually very nervous, because I really want this to be valuable and useful. Before I start, I want you to understand that the last two weeks have probably been two of the best weeks of my career, production-wise, and it's almost all on the telephone. And so, those are some of the things I want to talk to you about and share with you. But before we get started, because I'm trying to make this as impactful as I can in the time given to me, I think we need to understand what spectacular heroes, all the doctors and nurses, ambulance drivers, and rescue workers, and firefighters, police, EMTs, even grocery store employees and drugstore employees, and the people that are allowing us to keep ourselves fed and medicated, and all of those things. And they're racing toward the danger rather than running away from it. They're really true heroes, in the best sense of the word. And that's what I wanted to make sure that everybody in our business understands, is I think you're going to be the second line of heroes. The American people are going to desperately need the spectacular advice that you can share with them. These are times that are actually absolutely designed for our industry, and if you don't feel like you know enough, or you're afraid, I want you to, fear is not the absence of courage, it's overcoming fear that gets you in front of people and says, do you want to make sure that you are protected? Do you want to make sure that you don't get harmed? What if there was a way to take advantage and so forth? And I think we're about to have the best decade in the history of our business, and I'm going to talk about that in a moment. One other thing, I'm not very good with technology. I'm learning how to use it, and I'm, and I'm here at the Power Session place. I drove up to be with them, so they could help me get on this video that we're doing, because I really didn't know how to do it. I'm learning how to do it. And so, I want to just give a quick plug to Power Session, and on Wednesday, they're going to have a virtual panel that are going to show everybody how to use these technologies to get in front of prospects and clients, and stay in front of customers, so that they can have the information they need, even if you can't be there in person. And so, it's very vital if you can jump in there and do that. Last thing, as Tom Michael talked about my website, we want to give everybody something free. And so, if you go to my website in the next few days, there's a box that says 40 questions. If you click on that box, you will get 40 of my best questions that we want to share with all of you, that you'll be able to use on the phone, or in all your virtual scenarios, to inspire people to take action. That's what we do. So, I'm going to get started with this, because I want to make sure that I'm done in the timeframe that they've given me. So, I wrote this. So, I'm going to read a little, some of this, mess with it, add to it. But I really wanted to make sure I covered all the bases that I wanted to cover with you today. "In less than 30 days, the coronavirus, COVID-19, has changed the world as we know it forever. The important thing to remember is that this is not bad news, nor is it good news. It's only news. How we position ourselves and our customers determines whether it is bad news or a spectacular opportunity. The Americans who plan and prepare for occurrences like the coronavirus not only view what's happening as an opportunity, they're actually positioned to take advantage of that very opportunity. Those who are unwilling to plan and prepare for events like the coronavirus will most likely be permanently harmed. We don't need to give up on those people. We need to inspire those people, and we do that by asking them questions." "The financial pandemic has been long overdue. The Black Swan Event causing the financial pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic, finally opened the door to the financial crisis that the whole world is now facing. The point I want to hammer home right now is that this is the greatest time ever to be an insurance and financial professional. It is also the greatest time ever to show the American people how to use the spectacular benefits provided by cash value life insurance and annuities of every variety. We have the answers for 0% interest rates. We can provide quality income. We have the answers for dramatically increased tax..." We have the answers for dramatically increased taxes that we're sure to face in the future. We can easily replace lost benefits by showing Americans more effective and efficient uses of their money. There will be an enormous amount of money printing by our government. Think about it. Isn't that the only way that our government will be able to bail out everything that will require a bailout? Doesn't inflation destroy the purchasing power of our money? Aren't we the only industry that is able to use pennies to buy dollars? Think about that, you guys. Pennies that can buy dollars. Can't we develop strategies to take advantage of inflation rather than be hurt by it? How do Americans deal with the kind of volatility we've seen in the past 30 days? What if our strategies could smooth out that volatility for our customers? Do you think they would want to know about that? Finally, finally, didn't the last 20 days and the challenges we face in the days ahead make longevity a nightmare for most Americans who live paycheck to paycheck? And those Americans who thought they had a worry free retirement, aren't they now in danger of facing a worried filled retirement? What if our industry could provide strategies that would not only keep you safe, but would put you in a perfect position to take advantage of those events for the rest of your life? Would that be something Americans of every income level would be interested in discovering? This is so exciting to talk about. I've dreamed of this day. In fact, I want to have a little fun at my expense. I've been waiting for this event for four years. I have been harder on me than any of you ever could be. I joke that I have correctly predicted 10 of the last three downturns. It's true that a stopped clock is right twice a day and occasionally a blind squirrel does find a nut. Why are my customers not angry with me? Isn't it because I never tell them anything? I ask about their opinions concerning the markets. If they believe they're going up, we design a strategy that fits their opinion. If they believe the markets are going down, we provide a strategy for that. At the end of this tutorial, I will provide the exact language for conversations we are having with both prospects and clients. Many agents are already using these conversations successfully. But before we do that, I want to share some economic information with you. This information is why I still believe the Dow Jones Industrial Average will fall to between 10 and 14,000 before it turns back up. And oh, by the way, it will turn back up. There's no end of the world scenario. We will deal with our current situation and then we will begin another positive journey forward. However, this is not going to be an easy fix. At the peak, the Dow Jones Industrial Average rose to 29,568. That was a record. The market dropped 11,300 points to 18,213. That was a 38% reduction in less than 30 days. The market has now gone up three days in a row, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday of last week. And as I was writing this, the Dow currently sat at 22,552. Believe it or not, from the peak of 29,000, that means the, we're still in bear territory because it's 23.7% down from its high point. This is what is not being considered. The market increased 12% on Tuesday, 2% on Wednesday and 6% on Thursday. Why? If you must understand this, it's everything to do with what you're about to do to serve the American people. If you don't understand this completely, you will miss the opportunity to be of service to the American people. Our Congress created over $2 trillion of fiscal stimulus. This is stimulus provided by Congress and the government. The Federal Reserve created over 3 trillion of monetary stimulus. And I will tell you how they did that shortly. This is a total of 5 trillion of stimulus provided by our government in a very few days. 5 trillion is 25% of the gross domestic or GDP product of our country. We just printed 25% of our country. And think about this, that is more than the entire GDP of Japan, more than the entire GDP of Germany, more than the entire GDP of Italy, more than the entire GDP of England, more than the entire GDP of Canada, and we printed it in a few days, in a very few days. The stimulus was only enough to increase the market by approximately 20% while still leaving us in bear market territory. What will the markets do when the full impact of COVID-19 on our economy is realized? The complexity of the challenges our economy and the world's economy face are enormous. Let me see if I can review and simplify some of the issues that we will all face. You guys ready? Here goes. This is virtually important or vitally important to understand. We are just seeing the early stages of the COVID-19 virus and how we impacting our economy. Our government will be bailing out almost every industry in America. And yes, they will even have to bail out state and local governments. Think about this, if no one is working, how do the states collect taxes to provide the promised and yes, even required services? As part of the new legislation passed by Congress called the CARES Act, they even defer the employer side of the social security taxes until 2021 and 2022. What impact will that have? Excuse me, on the financial soundness of social security? The CARES Act also provides a waiver of required minimum distributions for qualified retirement plans and IRAs for the year 2020, 2020, 2020. Doesn't that mean lower tax revenue? How will they make up the difference if social security is already paying out more than it's taking in? Will the government have to increase taxes once they feel they have alleviated the economic catastrophe being caused by the coronavirus? Will they have to print even more money? I'd like to even go a little deeper if I could. It is vital that you understand that we are nowhere near the end of this economic catastrophe. We are essentially in the first quarter of a four quarter event. There is still much we can do to protect Americans and there's a tremendous opportunity on the backside of our current situation. The government provided 2 trillion of fiscal stimulus and the Federal Reserve will provide, listen to this, unlimited monetary stimulus. How do I know that? Please watch the March 22nd, 2020 edition of 60 Minutes. You can get it online commercial free. Scott Pelley from 60 Minutes interviewed the current president of the Federal Reserve Bank in Minneapolis, Neil Kashkari. He is one of the 12 regional bank presidents. He is the only person serving who participated in the financial crisis of 2007 and eight. He was the head of the troubled asset relief program, TARP, which was one of the stimulus programs used to restart our economy in March of 2009. In the 60 minute segments, please listen to this. President Kashkari states clearly and concisely that the Federal Reserve will print any amount of money necessary to keep the economy liquid. He clearly states that the number one priority of the Federal Reserve is to print whatever money is necessary to keep our economy liquid. He describes the Federal Reserve as the lender of last resort. This clarification was backed today by Federal Reserve Chairman Powell, who declared that the Federal Reserve will provide whatever money our economy requires. So how are they going to do that? They will provide quantitative easing to eternity. They will buy back 500 billion of government bonds from the banks. They'll buy back 250 million billion of mortgage bonds. In the nine trillion corporate bond market, the Federal Reserve will be buying 1 trillion or more of corporate bonds to maintain liquidity in those markets. Remember, there are now in many investment grade bonds that are being downgraded to junk bonds. Because the companies don't have any revenue to pay the interest payments. The high yield junk bonds market is now a $10 trillion market and growing. The Federal Reserve will work to keep that market liquid. The Federal Reserve will have to liquefy the municipal bond market. States and counties and cities are seeing dramatically reduced revenues. Businesses are closed, workers are laid off. How do the states and municipalities pay the interest on these bonds? The Federal Reserve has even offered to provide 1 trillion per week to the repurchase agreement overnight market. However, because most of the businesses are closed, there are no takers for this money. Finally, the Federal Reserve is actually preventing Euro dollars from crashing. Now, everybody wants to know what those are. Why do banks hold American dollars? We are the reserve currency of the planet. Commodities such as oil are traded using US dollars. If there are not enough US dollars available to foreign banks, the entire planet will be affected. This will surprise you. The Federal Reserve has no many, no idea how many Euro dollars are out there. How much longer will the rest of the world allow us to reduce the purchasing power of our money before they decide to look for another reserve currency such as Bitcoin, for an example? With the Federal Reserve being defined as the lender of last resort and as we get deeper and deeper in debt, won't the Federal Reserve have to print even more money? It's an exciting time to be a life insurance agent. You are the only answer. You have pennies that buy dollars. You can use combinations of cash value, life insurance and annuities, the mortality benefits of annuities to pay higher rates of interest. It's such a spectacular time to be an insurance agent. Isn't that why cash value life insurance will increase in value dramatically? Can't we buy dollars with pennies? Can't we have $1 do the work of many dollars? Won't Americans be much better off when they understand cash value life insurance is not an investment? Isn't it much more than that? Isn't it the foundation of a successful financial future? I would like to share just a teeny bit more information before I share the extremely positive and successful conversation you can have with every American. Here's a list of all the things that must be and will be bailed out by all the fiscal and monetary stimulus. Boeing, if we don't do it, thousands of jobs will be lost. The airline industry, and think about what they did. Over the last six years, they used 43.7 billion of their 50 billion of free cash flow to buy back their own stock to increase the price for their shareholders. Now that event has happened, the airlines are asking for 50 billion just to stay afloat and they're going to need more, much more. Cargo airlines, airports, auto industry, auto supply industry. Hospitals are going to need to be bailed out, restaurants, bars, commercial real estate, casinos, Indian casinos, where sovereign nations under themselves are asking for bailouts. Oil industry, brick and mortar retailers, aerospace and defense industry, banks, 80% of all the bank assets in the United States are in the five biggest banks. Credit unions, savings and loan, foreign banks. This is necessary because of all the Euro dollars, i.e. American dollars that are used by foreign countries all across the globe. We're going to have to bail out the states. You heard Governor Cuomo complain that they were only receiving 3.8 billion when they needed 15 billion. As the focal point of the illness and to be honest, the focal point of our financial crisis, don't you believe New York will require even more than 15 billion as this catastrophe moves forward? Counties, cities, municipalities of all sides, please listen to me. This is a short list. Have you realized who's not on the list? People, workers, taxpayers. They will get something, however, it will be very little compared to everyone else. According to Federal Reserve Governor Neil Kashkari, in his interview on 60 Minutes, he said it took people 10 years to recover from 2007 and eight. How long will it take people this time? Can't we in our industry intercede on behalf of the American people and show them how they can arrive at a much earlier positive outcome? It's very important that you stay in touch with customers during this crisis. I wanted to say a couple of examples, Zoom, go to meeting, go to webinar, join me, webinarjam.com, Google Hangouts, but this is the one I use, the telephone. This is the one I have the most expertise in. Please use the telephone to stay in touch with both customers and prospects who you would like to turn into future customers. Be reassuring and be positive. Only bad news, uh, only use bad news or negative information to get their attention. Pivot quickly to asking if our customers would like to develop strategies that would keep them safe and even better, what if you could take advantage of the events that are currently happening? Here's the almost verbatim conversation I am having with everyone. I do this in person, on the phone, on video conferencing. They have to send to me. I don't know how to send to them, which I am just starting to learn. You can teach an old dog new tricks. And the public is much more receptive to our conversation now because of current events and perceived future events. The public is no longer certain. They are filled with uncertainty. Here are some scenarios. If someone, if it's someone who has all their money with me and all their insurance with me, I call and verify that our strategy is working and that they will be able to take advantage of what is happening when our current situation resolves itself. I congratulate them on being brilliant enough to create a strategy that works under any circumstance. I verify that I will call when the opportunity presents itself and they thank them again. I don't think we thank our customers enough. If it's someone who has something with me, but most of their money and insurance is held elsewhere, I still call and tell them how much I appreciate their loyalty. And the only way I know how to thank them is if they would allow me to ask a series of questions that will confirm that they are aware of all the challenges they must deal with and that they could have strategies that would keep them safe. And yes, even better than that, wouldn't it be amazing if they could take advantage of everything that is currently happening? We will not try to sell you anything. Don't be afraid to say that. We don't want to sell people stuff. We want to help them buy stuff. We want to help them buy strategies. We want to help them buy solutions. We don't want to sell them anything. We will only use questions to help you clarify whether you are in control of current circumstances or not in control. Advise that there's no cost or obligation for this and that they'll probably take around 45 minutes. If there's no cost, at the very least, come on, at the very least, wouldn't this information be valuable to you, your family and your business? When and how would you like to get together? For multi-line agents, we have a lot of members who are multi-line agents and a lot of agents who sell Medicare supplements. Use the same language we used in the second example I gave you. Thank them for their business and their loyalty. We do not say thank you enough. Then explain the only way we know how to show you, we appreciate your business is if you would allow us to ask you some questions that would help you clarify all the challenges and risks you face. Could you be kept safe in these circumstances? And oh my goodness, and even better, could you take advantage of these circumstances? Americans do not buy bad news. They buy access to opportunity. Focus on the good news. People I have never met or prospects, I call and say hello, or I walk up and say hello if I'm doing it in person. My name is Van Miller. I'm an insurance and financial service professional. And we're worried that Americans are not getting the information they need to have successful outcome under the current circumstances in our economy. You would really help me a lot to help a lot of people. If I could ask you a few questions to get your opinion about certain information, I'd love to see how you would react to it. I'd only take about a minute. Would it be okay? Would really help us in our industry to do a better job for the American people. I'm always using we and us. I never use I. We and us is much less adversarial. I then explain the presentation I'm about to share. Many times they will show interest. I then asked them for the appointment and explain again the three goals. Are you aware of the challenges you face? What if you could be kept safe? And finally, what if you could take advantage of what is currently happening? Wouldn't that be valuable information? Here's what I'm asking with ridiculous success. I start with a question about the economy. Isn't it amazing what's happening in the markets? How is our country going to deal with all of this? Can I ask your opinion on a few things? This is really driving me crazy. I don't understand why people allow it to happen. How many times are Americans going to be okay with losing 30 or 50 or 70% of what they've made to Wall Street before they finally say enough's enough? How many times will they let that happen before they build a strategy that will help them never lose any money? And if this volatility continues, won't this be happening more often in the future? Doesn't it usually happen about every six to eight years anyway? Wouldn't you be further ahead if you didn't lose 30 or 50 or 70% of your money? Wouldn't you be further ahead if you didn't lose thirty or fifty or seventy percent of your money every six to eight years? If that wasn't bad enough, they're not finished with you. Now you get pushed over and deposited in front of the Internal Revenue Service. And you know what they do? They take twenty or thirty or forty percent of what's left. Wow, isn't that like piling on? And then they're not done with you either because then the Internal Revenue Service takes and passes you over to the government. And the government is going to need to print money like it's going on a style in order to fix everything that's going on in our country, and they will fix it. But after Wall Street takes their cut and the Internal Revenue Service takes their cut, when the government prints a bunch of money and reduces the purchasing power of your money going forward, how much purchasing power are you going to have left after all of those attack you? So at the very least, wouldn't it be worth forty-five minutes of your time to learn about a strategy that would allow you to never be harmed by these things ever again, and better than that? Gosh darn it, what if all we had to do is ask you some questions where you can clarify in your own mind how you could take advantage of these various scenarios for the rest of your life? At the very least, wouldn't it be worth forty-five minutes of your time? Now, what we're finding is that people want to find out what the information is. They want to know how to turn this mess into an opportunity. Agents will be astonished at how often this works. All it requires is practice. It must be conversational. It can't sound like a pitch. You need to only practice twenty or thirty times, and you will be amazed at the kind of proficiency you will develop after you've practiced. Now, I want to make sure that you all understand. I know what you're sitting there thinking, well, what exactly is it he does? Well, in twenty minutes, guys, I can't do it, but use your common sense. Think about this. Let me show you a quick, a couple of teeny examples. Customers got two hundred thousand dollars in a CD earning less than a quarter of a percent right now. So they're making five hundred bucks a year. And you go to them and you say, what if I could show you how to use mortality credits, and you gave me a hundred thousand of your two hundred thousand, and I could get you at your age sixty-eight years old or seven years old, between six and seven thousand a year instead of five hundred dollars a year? And believe it or not, you'd pay less taxes than you would on the five hundred bucks. And then we'll take your other hundred thousand, and we will buy you a two hundred thousand dollar face amount cash value life insurance policy. So here's the deal, if you get one check, just one, and then you die, you'll get your two hundred thousand, your family wasn't harmed. If you live for thirty years, like many Americans will, thirty times, I'll use the loan number, six thousand is a hundred eighty thousand of payouts. Think about this, on a hundred thousand dollar investment because you understand mortality credits. And the other hundred thousand will build cash value for those thirty years, and the death benefit I would bet would be way more than two hundred thousand. So you showed customers in a zero-interest rate environment how to be in control of all this, and stop and think about this. Here's another example. Let's say that they have three hundred thousand in an IRA, and they spend the last three years of their life in a nursing home, and eighty thousand the first year, eighty thousand the second year, eighty thousand the third year, they private pay, and then they die. If they left it in an IRA or a 401K, they're only going to have sixty thousand bucks left. But if you're able to show them, using the progressive nature of the current income tax laws, how they can transfer that money over to a cash value life insurance policy, if they had the same three hundred of cash value in a life insurance policy with a five hundred fifty thousand face amount, not a big face amount, just a little because they got some issues, you could spend the same two hundred and forty thousand dollars, you guys, and instead of subtracting it from the three hundred thousand you gave me, Mr. and Mrs. Customer, we would take that money and subtract it from the five hundred fifty thousand face amount. So do you have any idea how brilliant you are? You figured out a way to use eighty percent of your money while you were alive, and the day you died, your strategy replenished all the money for your family or your business or your charity. And I have another surprise for you that you're going to adore. If you never need long-term care without taking any additional risk, you just turned your three hundred thousand into five hundred thousand, you didn't waste any money on premiums. This is a spectacular opportunity to show the American people at a time when their discretionary money is going to go down, when their interest rates are zero, when they have all kinds of volatility that's going to stress them out, that they could develop a strategy that would never lose any money, that they could take advantage of opportunities because they'd have access to the money, that third, they could do it for reduced or total elimination of income tax, and that's the investment side of it. On the other side, there's a protection side with the same dollars. If you had a critical illness like a heart attack, stroke, or cancer, you could access some of these funds to help you transition your life so your life's not destroyed. But if you don't need it, you didn't waste any money in critical illness insurance. If you end up in the nursing home, we'll be able to use the values to pay for you to private pay as a long-term care patient. But here's the surprise, everybody, if you don't need it, you didn't waste any of the money. Aren't we going to have to show the American people that there are valuable and important strategies that will allow them to maximize the effectiveness and the efficiency of the money that they have compared to many of the other strategies that are being pushed in front of them right now? Please, I'm, I'm out of time. I can't tell you how much I, I love being an agent. I can't tell you how much I love being around agents. It's your time. It's the greatest time to ever be an insurance agent. For the first time ever, if you sell cash value life insurance, you're the competition. Nobody can touch you. Nobody can do what you can do with that dollar. It's the most exciting time ever to do what you do, and all you have to do is make a decision to learn some questions, to go to van miller dot com, get those forty questions, practice eight or ten of them that you love, and start asking everybody on the phone, on Zoom, on every way possible, and if you even be able to get in front of them in person, inspire them to take action. We do not sell life insurance, annuities, mutual funds, long-term care, critical illness insurance, Medicare supplements, car insurance, homeowners. We don't do that. If you think you do that, you're already out of the business and you just don't know it. Our number one responsibility is to inspire people to take action. And we don't do that by telling people what to do. We do that by helping them go through a process of discovery by asking them the questions that will help them be in control of everything that happens for the rest of their lives. Thanks for taking some time with me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Bravo, Van. Bravo, 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 as usual. And one of the things I like about Zoom is that you can, you can check out other people. And as I would scroll through a lot of the attendees that are on video, I could see a lot of people taking notes. So thank you again, and you should see my page. I got stuff all over, and I've listened to you a million times, so thank you.
But please, this is going to be ongoing, and if, if this continues further, I would like to contribute down the road, only the next time I'll come with just sales ideas instead of these conversations. I really want to help. It's, it's such a great time to be a member of NAFA. We have to invite people to be members of our family. NAFA is our family. It's not a, a place, it's a family. And lots of us, we need to put our arm around other NAFA members and say, listen, I know you're afraid, and I know you don't think you can do it as well as Van can, but you still got to go out there and ask the questions. And that's the fastest way to build self-esteem is to make a decision that you're going to do something for somebody else. So I, I'm just so pleased that you allowed me to contribute. It's such a great time to do what we do, and I'm so proud to be a member of NAFA, and thank you for allowing me to participate.
Thank you, Van, and we do stress that we, we are family, and if you're family, NAFA's got your back, and we've got your back. I've got a couple closing comments. I'll try to throw in a couple tidbits, never as good as Vans. But if you haven't seen it, Barron's, March twenty eighth. They looked at Barron's March twenty eighth on their retirement feature. Your life insurance covers COVID nineteen. If you need coverage, move quickly. If you need coverage, move quickly, and it talks about how already some companies might be putting exclusions if you have travel or maybe not even offering insurance if you have, if you have coverage. So I've already sent this out over the weekend to four or five people, and three of them responded, said, okay, 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 I get it, I get it. So that's one thing. And then I'll just give you Tom's five tidbits, and then we'll, we'll call it a day, but I want to remind everybody that this will be a a twice-a-week program as we go forward, Mondays and Thursdays. And so, yeah, we, yeah, we looked forward to having you back on. We've got some great speakers coming up that Suzanne will announce via social media, but we're going to do Mondays and Thursdays, twelve o'clock Eastern, and hope we can continue to get the great participation that we have as we try to provide value. I'll leave you with these five tidbits that I read somewhere. In times of crisis, first of all, have gratitude. We got, there's a lot going on, but we got a lot to be thankful for. And I think Van outlined a lot of them, the first responders, the hospital, the, you know, a lot of people are inflicted, a lot of people are dying, but there's a lot of people that are surviving, and we should be grateful for that. Second of all, have faith, be positive. There's no time to put your head in the sand. Be positive. And we're trying to help you be positive. You're in, you're in this business because you're a positive person in the first place, so keep that going. Third of all, in these times that are turbulent, get, follow a routine, get a routine and stick to it. If you're working at home, it's real easy to get distracted in case you didn't find that out already. Four, find a way to help out. I can tell you at our end, you know, maybe not, you can't go down to a food bank and pack food, but sometimes these food banks need people to help distribute goods or cash donations or whatever, but help out wherever you can in your community. That's what NAFA people do, and I think you'll feel better about yourself. Last but not least, stop and smell the roses. Yeah, these are difficult times, but a spring, a spring is coming up around us. Again, we got to be positive, smell the roses. We have a lot to be thankful for. We're in the most beautiful business in the world. And we do, we do, we are a very noble profession, and I'm proud to be a NAFA member like Van is. I really appreciate everybody's time on this call. If you have any ideas or suggestions for, for us on, on further calls, please don't hesitate to reach out to your executive committee or your NAFA Board of Trustees. And on behalf of all of them, thank you for your time. Have a great week.